Well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to our work session. Nice to have a good crowd here and get to recognize some students and employees. And you're certainly welcome to stay for the whole meeting if you want to, but you know, if you have, after your recognition, you feel free to go if you like, but we'd love to have you stay and sit through our meeting. But at the beginning of our meetings, we have a moment of silence, and if you'll join us for that, then we'll do the pledge of allegiance and some of our students will lead us in that as well. So if you'd join us for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Mr. Whitrock, are you going to have some excuses? All right. Well, couldn't be a better-looking group.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. Good job. They're ready to do South Carolina with you. They can do the South Carolina with you. Oh, they can. Oh, yeah. Yeah, they can do that. That's the best one we've had. And they will be on tape. We tape our meetings, so you can go online to the school district website and see the video of the meetings, and you get to see them up front. So you can show it to them later. So, Mr. Whitrock, we'll let you...
Sure. We're just waiting for your lead.
Let you go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. My name is Josh Marocchio. I'm the principal at Orchard Park, and this is Charlotte Rochester, my assistant principal. And we're just going to give you a little bit of highlights of some of the things that happened at Orchard Park this year, and then Faroe will follow us. So be grateful, thank. So, you want to hit the...
I will. I'll do it for you.
Thank you, ma'am. So, we just, like we said, this is my first year at Orchard Park, and my first year for her as assistant principal, so all-new administration. And we've had really a great year, better than we deserve for our first year at our school. So it's been a great time for a year. I think you jumped through a little bit there.
Do that.
There you go.
So, one of the first ways to kick off the year, we had International Literacy Day, and you can see that students and teachers are dressed up as their favorite book characters to celebrate. We had a book parade at the very end of the day, really close to dismissal time, so we paraded, and then we went home. So we were excited, and we had a wonderful time with that.
And of course, we like a lot of schools across upstate and across, really, the country. We supported Townville by wearing our little superhero outfits that day. It was fun. Talk about fire safety and had a good time with that. Keep going.
We were very excited this year to have a Veterans Day breakfast. We haven't done this in the past, and it's something new, and we felt like it was a great opportunity for some of our veterans to come in and have a nice breakfast, and then we had a little presentation with a poem and some other great things, and everybody was really excited. So we were very blessed that we have so many people serve this country.
Our tailgate night is another literacy night. It's kind of a family literacy night in disguise. It's our way of bringing in quite a big crowd of parents, and we kind of make it a Clemson/USC kind of theme that night. And we play tailgate games that are all, they're all themed tailgate games, but they're also based on literacy from early childhood all the way up to fifth grade. So we have a lot of fun that day. We kind of got our Beta Club started. Beta Club used to be at Orchard Park years and years ago, and so we got that restarted, and so we had our first Beta Club induction in quite a few years.
We were so excited this year. It was our first time winning the Battle of the Books, so we had some students, some fifth graders worked really hard, and they came through at the end and won, and I think we were just as excited as the children were.
One of the biggest things we've been doing this year in support of the profile of a South Carolina graduate is we've endeavored to bring foreign language instruction to elementary school. And in lieu of actually hiring some very expensive teachers, we brought Rosetta Stone to our school and used our Title I funds to pay for it. And you can tell by the numbers we put on the screen there, we have five different languages: French, German, Spanish, Mandarin, Chinese, and Japanese, and those are the numbers of students in our school that are taking it. At the beginning of the year, kindergarten through fifth grade had a choice of one of those five languages, and you can see Spanish was overwhelmingly the favorite, but we had, you know, a good number of German and Spanish as well, and then a few brave folks that were on a challenge, take on the challenge of learning Japanese and Chinese, not only with, you know, the very different sounding language, but also the different characters that are, you know, kind of a characteristic of those languages. The next slide kind of shows you what Rosetta Stone's all about. Rosetta Stone is a very immersive, kind of natural way of learning a language. At no time when you're learning a language do you ever see the English translation of the words. It's basically the same way that we learned to speak as toddlers, you know? Mama would say, "Hey, there's ball, ball," and eventually you would learn that that round thing was a ball. And of course, you would make mistakes and call other things balls, but in this case, if you see that, I can't read from that distance, it says Lanina Kome. Now, early on in the languages, they learned that Lanina is a girl. Well, if you look at those pictures, there's only one girl up there, and the girl, they might think, "Okay, what's Kome?" Well, they have to think about what the little girl in the picture's doing, she's eating. And so they deduce, basically, they use their critical thinking skills to figure out their language, and it becomes much more meaningful to them, a much more natural way of learning. And so, actually, we'll go back to that slide for one second. This is where we're going to call up a couple of our young ladies. We decided we'd bring in a couple of girls that would show off their language skills. These are both kindergartners. This is Rowan Bryant and Autumn Knight. Kindergarten, as you can imagine, got off to quite the latest start as far as Rosetta Stone goes, because they had to learn the technology side of things. I mean, kindergartners are just learning how to go to school, period. And so they only recently really got going, and boy, they have gotten going. And these are two of our language stars. They're both learning Spanish. So ladies, take it away.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Bryant.
Hello, my name is Autumn Knight. We are in kindergarten at Orchard Park Elementary School. And today we're going to be teaching Spanish. Do you want to know numbers 1-2-10 in Spanish? Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis, siete, ocho, nueve, diez. You want to know how to bike in Spanish? Una bicicleta. La, la, la. La. Bicicleta. La. One more together and it makes una bicicleta. Do you want to know how to say eat in Spanish?
Yes.
How does it eat in Kome? Kome. Well, wait, you can have sounds with what, drink, what's on, how to say drink in Spanish? I was saying, you say drink in Spanish is bebe. Bebe. But that's all we have for you in that place.
Now, in conjunction with that foreign language learning, we also had a really exciting family learning night back in March. It was called Taste of the World Night, and it was literally and figuratively a Taste of the World, because they got a chance to do some arts and crafts and different activities from the different cultures, but also got to taste some pretty exotic foods from each of those different cultures. And at this time, we're going to call up Debbie Sloan. Debbie Sloan is actually our attendance clerk, but she has taken on a whole new role this year. In fact, if you go to Orchard Park, underneath her placard where it says attendance clerk, it also says foreign language facilitator. Because just once, I asked her, I said, "You want to come up with some ideas for our foreign language night?" This is back in, oh, we October, and boy, she took the bull by the horn, and she really has just come to truly facilitate the foreign language instruction in our school. So she's just going to talk you a little bit about some of the things that they did and how she pulled the community into the event.
Okay. Well, I had to make notes, because I didn't want to leave anything out. As you can see, it's so exciting to see our kids speaking a foreign language, and we have some, like Mr. Whitrock said, that are learning the harder ones, Chinese and Japanese, and to hear them speak that is, you know, exciting as well. I did jerk it out of his hand, along with our bookkeeper. She was a big help, too. We did reach out to the community for support. It's important, you know, to get the community involved with our school functions, to form that partnership with our teachers and our students and our parents as well. You know, we can always use the community support, and I do want to recognize some of the businesses that contributed. We did have some foods that were unique to the country. We had jicama. I don't know if some of you know what jicama is. The Latinos use it a lot, almost like a snack, or you can use it in like a salad. Didn't go over too well with our vendors, because I think they were a little intimidated by it, but we did have some trying it, and we did have sushi. And I was excited to see not only our kids trying sushi, but our parents getting excited about trying sushi, and now they will be going to Sole to buy sushi. But I do want to recognize the businesses. Little Japan here in West, oh, well, not here in Westminster, but in Westminster, and they donated some items, and then some of them, they gave us some things that are reduced costs. Porto in Westminster, Los Amigos in Seneca, Chin Chen in Seneca, Sole in Seneca, Martha's Market Place Cafe. She and her sister gave us a great deal on some German food, apparently. Her niece is one of our employees, and we found out by word of mouth that she does that for Oktoberfest here in Wahala, so of course, we jumped right on that. Ingles in Westminster and Seneca, we kind of bid them against each other, like, "Seneca's giving this, you know, it's going to be this." And so that worked out well for us. Our PTO contributed. Also, our First Baptist Church Sunday School members gave us money, and Sedex Co. did provide some chafing pans, so we could serve all that food. But we also gave back to the community. We had custom-ordered fortune cookies that had fortunes that were more on the kid-friendly level, but we did have five Taste of the World winners. So we did purchase gift certificates for five of those businesses that donated food, so that the winners could go and give back to our community, which we thought was really great. We did have volunteers. Our Orchard Park this year was very honored to have Yoshiko Moon as our artist in residence. I know she's been at Faroe as well. We were just so excited to have her there. She met, what, taught our fourth and fifth graders. The Japanese tea ceremony, calligraphy, and origami. She also agreed, because she was at Faroe, to come to our Taste of the World and volunteered and did calligraphy for our parents. So we were so fortunate to have her come back. But we also had, we found out about two Seneca teachers that teach Chinese, Linda Sui and Rose Lee, I believe, I'm getting their names right. They came and did the calligraphy in Chinese. One thing that was moving for me was when Yoshiko Moon and Ms. Lee and Ms. Sui came up and were excited of all the crafts that were going on. And we also had a Chinese dragon that our bookkeeper made, and it was awesome. And our junior Beta members took time out to do the traditional dragon dance. They earned some of their service points doing that, so they got involved as well. But they were very moved. I mean, you know, to be originally from China and then be excited to see us, you know, embrace their culture of something that's tradition, you know, that was really moving for me. Next year, I did find out Wahala High School has a German club. Unfortunately, it was like at the end of the planning, and we were not able to get them involved, but we would like to get their club members involved with our students that are learning German for next year, and also have a Clemson University contact that hopefully will help us reach out to some other bilingual students and get them involved as well. So I'm just excited. I hope that all the schools can experience this. It was a great event.
Thank you.
And I know Dr. Thorsland had a special recognition he wanted to make unrelated to foreign language, but something related to Math Madness.
I did, and if you want to join me down front, we've got a little certificate for Eli. Can I get Eli to come up here? So I was at, come stand right here, see, we don't have cameras. I was at Math Madness a couple Saturdays ago. Of course, y'all know what Math Madness is. Our elementary school students get to compete in solving math problems, and I was serving as a proctor in the algorithm section, which was in the auditorium in Wahala High, and Eli was sitting down the aisle from me, and the teacher that was serving as a proctor for him is Wendy Westbrook. She's a teacher at Wahala Elementary School. She didn't know Eli. She just had a group of students there, and what they do is they flash a problem up on the board, and the students have to answer it, and they write it on a dry erase board, and they show it to the teacher, and the teacher says, you know, "Thumbs up, you got it right," or "No, you got it wrong," even when they take a ticket if they get it wrong. They have 10 tickets, and when their 10 tickets are gone, they leave the auditorium, and then kind of the last student standing wins, if you kind of get the idea of how it works. So Eli answered a question, and the teacher looked at his board and said, "Good job, Eli, you got it." Well, he knew he didn't get it, because he was one digit off, and he could have very easily, most of us, when I was in school, I think I would say, "Ooh, I'm breaking out." But Eli called his Westbrook over and said, "I didn't get that one right. I need to give you a ticket." And I just feel like it's very important that we recognize integrity when we see it, because it's hard for young people to always do the right thing, but our profile of the South Carolina graduate says that we want our students to show integrity, and I just thought, Ms. Westbrook made a point to tell me and wanted me to tell Mr. Whitrock, so we thought we would congratulate Eli and say, "Good job for showing integrity, and we wanted you to be publicly recognized for that."
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
You go ahead. We did have, we made certificates for the young RV students who came up to do...
Did they come back up then?
Yeah, you want to come, we got little certificates for the girls who did such a fine job with that Spanish instruction.
They need to come.
I don't know if they were...
We have to be talking about...
So, Rowan, that's you, right? Rowan.
Thank you, person. Very good. I appreciate what you do there. Wait, man, wait.
Michael, bend down.
And Debbie, we want to thank you for your hard work as well, because I was there that night for their Taste of the World Night, and it's quite a good job, so we want to thank you for it.
Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Harris, and I'm principal at Faroe, and I'd like to recognize our student who gave the pledge, that's Dylan Lepier. Dylan, come on up here. Dylan is one of our Faroe students, and he has always done a fantastic job. He's a fifth grader and just one of those minimal fear boys. We've had quite a few of them. He's the third, and he's the last one, but we have Riley and Cole, and the Lepier family moved into our area when Riley was in first grade, so we've had all three of them. So, and Riley just got accepted to the South Carolina School for the Arts.
Wow. Great.
So we have this for you, and we just want to say we appreciate you, Dylan. You're a gift. One of our many good gifts. Also, I want to recognize, and one reason our kids do so well is because of people like Janice Jordan. Ms. Jordan, come on up here. Jan is our reading coach at Faroe, and this is her first year with us. She, but she's one of those people that comes in quietly, she does her job, you know, and everything runs smoothly because of people like her, so we appreciate her. We titled our presentation tonight Coming Home, because our whole goal this year has been our folks from Oakway coming home back to us down the Faroe campus. And as I look at this picture, I started counting them. Of the 13 years I've been at Faroe, I've hired 43 of these young people, you know, and so I feel like they're a good group of folks, and they just do such a good job. Two of them that I'm most proud of are these two right here. This is our assistant principal, Nolan Black, and our assistant principal and part-time teacher, Liza Smith, and I hired these two, too, so. So we have a presentation tonight just to sort of show you some of the highlights of Faroe, to show you how we've sort of pulled together as a Faroe team.
First, we're going to show you our construction process. Sometimes you don't get to see the before and the afters. We added, we lost our track, which is where our new gym sits, so the district was really gracious, and we have a V inside our property in between the buildings, and so they put a track inside around the property. So that was a, it was a great addition, because PE uses that. We use it for walking track in the mornings, so that the kids can get their energy out before they come into the classroom, get their brains going. These are two of the same pictures, sort of a process of looking from the, all the way at the very back of the gym, through the wall, and then through the cafeteria to the stage. Our gym-a-cafe-torium, it is a fantastic space, and you'll see a picture later of just how much potential that it has and the amount of people that we can have, because we have crowds that come out to Faroe for all of our events. So the next one is just sort of the same spot with our nice, large stage for all of our events. This is from the outside, looking at the construction as it just started into the cafeteria. The gym hasn't been added yet. Some more progress there. And this is the completion of both the gym and the cafeteria. This is our drop-off point. What I liked about it was the architects, when they designed it, they didn't design it necessarily in straight lines. They had some fun with the angles and making it just a little more elementary in the look from the outside. This is from the stage, looking all the way through the gym prior to the back wall. And this was our 100 Book Challenge celebration, so that was the same spot. We had all the kids in the entire school inside with the West Side Band playing for the celebration. The wall moves out between the cafeteria and the gym to create that large space. This was prior to the concert for the Christmas, and this was an airshot. You can see that we've almost added half the size of the building to our existing building, so it's been a fantastic addition. We've had two pre-K classrooms, the cafeteria and the gym-a-cafe-torium that are new, but we've also had a brand-new library, the new art room, music room. Every single person in the entire school has moved except for our guidance counselor. So she was the only one, she's right in the middle, and everyone else just sort of moved around her, and it's sort of fitting, you know, going around guidance. But, so that's just sort of a segue into what has happened physically at Faroe that allows us to do so many things with our teachers at Faroe and our kids.
I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the academic side that we've done. Mr. Black mentioned our reading celebration we had. Janice Jordan, our reading coach, helped order that. That was a first for our school, having kind of like a reading pep round for our students, and what kind of got us going on that is our RIT time. This is a time during the school day where second and third graders, everybody moves during that time in the afternoons. They go to a kind of like an individualized class where other students are on their level for reading. Fourth and fifth grade do it in the morning time as well, and so they all move at the same time. So kind of my role for this has been to kind of look at our MAP data, look at our reading scores, find where our strengths and weaknesses are as a school. So it may be in informational text, meaning in context, maybe it's vocabulary or literary text. So we look at our data, and we figure out where our weaknesses are, and so then we take that weakness, and we basically group our students according to their RIT ranges with their MAP scores. So once we get them grouped, you see a checklist up on the board. This is what our teachers get, and according to their RIT range, these are the skills that these students in their class are neat. It's targeted for those individual students. So they'll have the list of their students there, they'll go through, they'll teach their kids these skills, and as they feel like they're mastering their skills, they just check them all. They also have vocabulary that needs to be introduced to them to help them be successful on that test. And we also have a thing called Move Up Mondays, and so it's kind of a fluid process, so if we see that a kid is really excelling in their RIT range and they're doing really well, they've mastered these skills, our teachers can give them a form of assessment, and if they do well in these assessments, they're able to move up a RIT range. And so now they're being pushed even further to learn those reading skills that they need in their weakness area. Every so often during the year, we'll relook at our MAP scores. We did it this summer according to their spring scores to get us started. Then after fall, we readjusted. After winter, we readjust as well. So our hope is to really see our reading scores jump from there. When we're doing our RIT classes, we really want it to be focused, and we want it to be small group instruction, so our kids get as much kind of one-on-one assistance that they can. So these are some pictures of our RIT class doing that. So you'll see in the one picture, there's a small group at a table, so we encourage our teachers to do a small group during the RIT time, and while they're working with a few students here, they have their other students on challenging, focused activities. So you see, we recently got the Chromebooks through Title I funds, and now one-to-one, so we're finding resources that can provide that one-on-one direct instruction. So, you know, with the possibilities of Canvas, we could be doing things with videos with the teachers. One website that we like to use is Digital Readworks, just because we can assign students individual articles that are specifically on their level, give them questions, they can submit it online, and then our teachers can go back and check their progress and that kind of thing, and find out what else they need to work on in that small group time. So those are some of the things that we're focusing on as an academic side, but through our brand-new additions to our building and all the possibilities we have with having folks come in, I think Ms. Harris is going to highlight some of those great events that we've had at our school this year.
And actually, the coming together and coming home for our faculties even started the year before this, and I applaud the district, or the school board, for allowing us to have one school, but two different facilities. That worked very well, because we began to learn and know the fourth and fifth grade teachers and those students again, and they began to learn us, so we began to blend us together. And so on June 1st, we brought them home. A special thanks to Adam Smorchwarey. They picked them up and brought them back to us. So what was even more exciting to us is when Oakway left us, Adam Smorchwarey did it then, at that time, 19 years ago. They carried them down there, and now they brought them back to us. We stood out on the front lawn, and we applauded them, and we welcomed them in, but that was back in June 1st. And then as we got ready for the first meet-the-teacher night in our new facilities, it was a little bit rushed right there at the beginning. You know, they were still constructing, I think, the day before, and our faculty and all of our fourth, fifth grade teachers and everybody in the building kind of joined together, and it was one afternoon, and we realized we needed another room for music, I think, wasn't it, Nolan? Anyway, and it was going to be in this room that was just filled with stuff, and so everybody got their carts, and they lined up down the hall, loading the stuff in and out, you know, and I said it sort of looked like us at a nursing home with our carts, you know? So I fed them cookies as they walked down the hall, again and again, but we were ready, and our families were excited, and we had that beautiful new... But we were ready and our families were excited and we had that beautiful new design and it was just beautiful. It was great. The first time we actually had a lot of outside community folks in was September 8th. And that was our grandparents' breakfast. So we had a lot of discussion on how are we going to line them up and where are we going to put them all, but it worked beautifully. I mean, we served lots of grandparents that morning for breakfast. It went smoothly and it was just a great time for our community to see our new cafeteria. September 28th is the day I think we'll all remember at Fair Oaks. And that was the day of the town's shooting. And even though we're in two different counties, we're still very close. We remember that day well. We were very glad that we had already gone through the Code Red Trail in our building exactly a week before. So we felt somewhat prepared when we went into a Code Yellow in our building. Of course, you know, when you have something like that happen, you know all the families in that building. One of our teachers, his wife teaches kindergarten there. So you felt connected to that school, not only by the closeness of the two facilities, but just by the relationships that you have. A lot of our teachers go to the church there and a lot of them knew Jacob Hall that was killed. So it brought it home to us. It brought it to our hearts. It made us realize how fragile life is. It made us once again become more vigilant of the safety of our kids. So we appreciated when the district came back to us and talked to us about other ways that we can have safety as an utmost importance for our building. We're very fortunate. David Smith and Jim Williams, John Williams, comes every morning. David works for the Sheriff's Department and John is a parent of a kindergartner and he also works for the Sheriff's Department. And they're in our building every morning and they're opening the doors for our kids and they just volunteer to do that. So we feel very lucky. Then on October 28th, we had our Career Day. Lots of folks came in. We had careers all over the place. We had the helicopter in the front, we had a horse in the back, you name it. We had it going on, you know. And it was great. I mean, and you know, of course, all this is volunteer and lots of our families participate and help us out with it and it kind of opens our kids' eyes to what all the possibilities are for them. On November 11th is when we had Veterans Day Breakfast. That was the first time we actually used our stage. It was great. Then in December, we had our first Christmas concert there. And it was just fun to have third, fourth, and fifth graders all on the stage at the same time, which is something we've never been able to do. So it was huge. And of course, we opened the walls between our gym and our cafeteria and it just filled the place. So it was great. Then in January, we had our first Math and Science Night. We were lucky, now that we have some Title I funds, we were able to hold this event. We were able to feed a slice of pizza to our families. Everybody just poured in. Of course, the Star Lab was a big hit and it kind of let our kids see that, you know, science can be fun. Then again, February 16th, we hold our Love for Literacy Day. And that's a full-day event. Families can drop in any time during the day. Our kids do a lot of writing and the whole purpose is for the children to read their favorite writings that they have done to someone in their family. We have dads and aunts and uncles, just everybody comes. So it's a great day. Of course, in every school, there's just always a touch of tragedy. And in our building, it was little Everett Sears. He was the grandson of one of our 4K kindergarten assistants. And he was born with a heart defect. And he, so when we got ready to prepare for jump rope for heart, we highlighted Everett. We also highlighted little Jaden Murk, little Murk girl. And those two kids were kind of the kids that we focused. Now, the little Murk girl was, is going back for an operation just this week in Charleston for her third operation on her heart and is doing well. But for this event, we raised over $7,000. So we felt very, very lucky. And then, of course, then our Adventures with Artists Week. It's always a great week. We've been doing that for years. We always kind of struggle on how we're going to pay for all those artists because we have one for every grade level. We sent a letter out to our families and the money poured in because they know it's important and they believe in it and their kids have done it for years and they want to support Fair Oaks Elementary. So then as we look toward the rest of the year, it's going to be packed. We were like, oh man, how many events can we have? And it seems like one almost every day. You know, 15 days of testing and then we got lots of field trips and lots of celebrations to close out the year.
And then one more thing is, we need to say a huge thank you to Ms. Harris. She's been with us for 13 years, specifically at Fair Oaks, but over 35 years plus with education. And, you know, this picture really sums up, I think, her ushering in and helping and really focusing in on the kids. That's her, you can, that's who she is. I mean, that's in her heart and I think any parent that has had her as the principal, they know. And I think, you know, the board and the district staff will agree. I mean, she has been a great person to learn under and I'm pretty sure, I'm not going to look that way. I mean, just the wealth of knowledge that comes from her and her understanding and her calm and her composure and her care for the kids is just unmatched. So it's going to be a huge lost at Fair Oaks, but I mean, she leaves us with a lot of great faculty and staff, as she highlighted before, that she's poured into the building. So we just wanted to take a moment to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two of our outstanding schools in the district appreciate your presentation. Those were excellent. Next, we, I'm going to motion then to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda for the work session of April 3rd, 2017.
Second. I have a motion, the second. All in favor? Unanimous?
We're used to it. It doesn't hurt.
Well.
Kind of makes us feel bad.
I know. Maybe.
That was the best presentation we've ever had. We're two little girls.
They were great.
Oh, they got flowers too. Did you see the flowers?
Yeah. They deserve them.
Yes.
That's the same program we have throughout the county now, right? That we're adding.
I'm going to let Ms. Hopkins give you some good news on that in a few minutes.
Okay, because that's what I thought we were going to ask.
All right. Next, we have public comment. No one signed up for public comment?
They're all gone.
Great, they heard you were speaking.
Unless no Crystal's not here.
I didn't take over Michael.
Oh, no, that's fine. It's fine. The only thing I have tonight in my report is Greg. He is here to share with you kind of where the YMCA is on the new facility and kind of make a request of you and something that you can talk about over the next couple of weeks before deciding.
I fixed that on my version. Just saying that. Anyway, that's supposed to, all right, thank you. I appreciate it, Dr. Thorson. I want to thank you all for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak. Crystal is in Atlanta with personal matters, so she thrusts me in the spotlight. I brought reinforcements, just so you know. Mr. Ray, Jason is a board member with me as well and so is Ms. McCormick. So I acknowledge your guys' presence. I appreciate all that you do for us. We can go ahead, next. I'm Greg Enders, for the record. I'm the CVO, as they call it, or Chief Volunteer Officer, which is essentially chairman of the board at the Y. And I've been there for, on the board for six years, probably chair for two. What I want to do tonight is express to you guys where we are, where we want to go, and how you can help. So currently, we are, as you know, have after-school care for over 300 children in 10 locations, I'm sorry, 10 elementary schools in nine locations. Our summer camp, last summer, we had over 100 kids in two locations, Wahala and down in Seneca. We are currently, by the way, housed in Seneca at the Jiddlet Center. That's where our location is right now. We are partnering with municipalities, including Wahala for the city, the pool up there. That is something we've had for, this will be the third summer. I think they're pretty pleased with our administration. We also partner with Seneca using the Jiddlet Gym and their facilities for certain programs. And they also, of course, house our offices, so that's where we're located. We have soccer. We focus on ages three to six. We let the rec departments kind of handle things after that as we try to fill gaps where they're needed. That was one of the areas they said, you can have the younger children and then we send them on to the rec department. We have, as of this year, a new volleyball program, women's volleyball, and men's basketball, which I think is in their third week at the Jiddlet Gym. So we've organized that and rest take on that. Jason and I both participate in that league, so they're happy at the gym right now. Strategic partners, so this is important. We have engaged GHS, formerly Oconee Medical Center, now Oconee Memorial Hospital. So they have extreme interest, of course, in having a Y here for community wellness, a place to have their patients referred to for enhancing their health, if you will. The Oconee County is in support. I've spoken with the chair and she is definitely in support of a Y. And we're trying to figure out ways that we can help them and they can help us. Of course, we don't go asking directly for revenue, but I think across the state, you'll find plenty of examples where there's county support for a facility like a Y, where we could both benefit from that relationship. And of course, Richard Blackwell has indicated his interest in a Y because from an economic standpoint, it attracts people to the area from a business standpoint. We have several people from local industry who have indicated to us, and we have Larry Smith from Schneider Electric on the board, who's indicated, and he was chair of OIG, that having a Y here is something that they use for recruiting purposes. And it's been a struggle in some regards for finding employees' families things to do, and a Y would certainly help in that regard. The OMH Foundation is separate from Oconee Medical Center or Oconee Memorial Hospital, GHS, too many acronyms. They have an interest in the cardiac rehabilitation aspect. They actually want a warm water therapy pool. And if you've seen their cardiac rehab area, it's about the size of that area right there. They want to enhance that and be able to send their Phase II, there's Phase I, II, III, Phase II cardiac rehab patients over to something like a Y. And you'll see that in Greenville quite a bit and in Anderson certainly. And we'd like to reproduce that here in the county. Industry, as I've mentioned, has a vested interest in not only attracting employees, but also for the corporate wellness programs. That's something we can really facilitate and they do it with several businesses in Greenville. I'm a member of the Greenville, the Kainhalter branch, but Greenville Y, and so you see that aspect of it if you're at that facility. And the municipalities, I've already mentioned, essentially the Y fills the gaps that the cities can't, whether it's administering something like a city pool, whether it's doing recreation for the younger children that they don't want to necessarily focus on. We can fill the gaps where it's necessary. Next slide, please. So what I want to tell you about the pieces we have in place. So the land, we have, we have, there's two parcels on the property. Right now, we're looking at the front parcel, and that's 15 acres or so to the west of the western entrance. I don't know what number it is now, but western entrance near the Aaron's Rental, there's a parcel there. It's about 15 acres. There's a big hole in the front and I'll show you conceptual in a little bit. And that is where we have been, that's where the hospital would like us and frankly, from a visibility standpoint, access standpoint, that's the easiest location. Land's a little rough, but it is doable for sure. We are in the process of going through the USDA loan process, which is somewhat complicated, but we got a preapproval letter back in the fall indicating that we are approved. Right now, we're taking the necessary steps and I believe we have one more step, which includes yet another financial review from a certified public accountant. The GHS commitment has been made and they are committing $500,000 over five years. There's also an entity, it was a Physicians Health Services Organization, and that has money left in it from when GHS took over Oconee Medical Center. So there's a couple hundred thousand in there as well. That's not to mention what the foundation can do, and they're pretty powerful right here, so we're confident in their abilities. Industry and private donations, we've already received several industry donations, including a couple of financial institutions. And the private donation, we've just signed a pledge for a $100,000 private donation from an individual in the area. So we're working through the legal aspects of that, but we have signed the pledges of our last board meeting last month. Hogan Construction was, through the RFP process, were chosen as the constructor. They do big-time stuff. They have specialty expertise in pools, which is what we're interested in. And they've also done a lot of stuff at the Clemson Memorial Stadium. It's called, that's still Tiger Stadium, but certainly they're well-known and well-qualified. We have a pro forma that shows we're sustainable and certainly it's passed muster with the USDA. The first financial review we did indicated that those numbers were in order and we have one more to do at the request of the USDA. So all things point to the pro forma showing that we can not only build a facility, but sustain it. And I know that's a question that's been asked on several occasions. Next slide. So the slide, this is the only one we have, this is not the greatest, but it does show you the westernmost interest of the hospital with the overlay there and down in the corner. Of course, the bottom is 123. In the bottom left-hand corner is the Aaron's Rental and the plaza where Shalaxis Deli is located. And then the front there is where the ravine is. Next slide, please. That's a little bit closer view. So I've added the 123 and then OMH, and that's the westernmost street there, Oconee Memorial Drive. And then you have what is a tiered area with the field up at the highest tier to your right. In the middle is the building and down to the left is the lower-tier parking lot with, of course, tiered parking, or tiered parking right outside the entrance for help with people needing closer access. That is an outside rendering that McMillan, Pazin, and Smith, who was the architect, put together for us. We have a couple of views of that. Go ahead. So this is a busy slide and it doesn't translate well to a PowerPoint, but to the left is the gym, which is a future phase. To the back right is the pool, which is six lanes at this point. To the front is the wellness area. There's locker rooms in the back middle, cardiac or exercise rooms, if you want to call it that. And we're still considering a community room, which is a big aspect of a lot of Y's. So I have it out on a handout, which is probably better. But again, this was our first go with the architect and we still have Hogan advising us as well. Go ahead. So what's the next steps? We're formalizing our land ownership with the GHS. And as you can imagine, a $2 billion entity doesn't move well, it moves quickly when it comes to legal. So I've gone through Mr. Combe, Hunter Combe, and we're still working on the survey and the transfer of the deed, which requires a board action and their boards are only quarterly, so that's in May. They may need us a special meeting to give us the land ownership and that's important for the USDA loan as well. And again, that goes back, or goes next to the securing the construction with the loan, or the construction loan with the bank. If you are familiar, and I'm not, what the USDA does is come in and pays off a bank who gives you the construction loan. So you still need criteria to meet for a basic construction loan, which is equity and sustainability and then the finances to pay the bills, of course. So over 18 months, 12 months to 18 months is the construction loan. The bank does all of that and then at the end, the USDA comes in and writes a check to them. So the banks like it because it's a secure loan, it's guaranteed, and they make a little money in the meantime. We're going to continue with the design process through Hogan Construction, tweaking things. We're still engaged with McMillan, Pazin, and Smith, who alter things based on costs, needs. That's one of the things we're looking at. And of course, we cultivate our partnerships as I'm doing tonight and have done with the county council and with GHS, Oconee Medical Center. And then I spoke with the people that did our feasibility studies. Some of you have met with them, but they are looking toward a capital campaign. There's different levels of support that they offer, so that's something we're hoping to embark on in June. Next one. Next one. So, the mission, tonight, the school district of O'Conne County, the reason I'm here is to tell you, can you hear me okay? Okay. So, we know that y'all have a mission to teach children to swim. My children were fortunate enough to go to Kiwi, so, getting closer. My children were fortunate enough to go to Kiwi, so they were able to participate in the swimming activities that they offered, and Josh was heading that up, it still is there, and it's a great thing. The kids, my children loved it, I know all the kids do, and I, it's third grade, if I'm not mistaken, so that's something I know y'all would like to bring to all the schools. We all talk about the amount of water in the county, we have Kiwi, Joe Cassie, Hartwell, certainly, drought-proofing kids is something we do for, that's what the Y does, that's what we do across the state. I think it's particularly pertinent in a county like this, so that's something we would bring with a pool, and that's your focus as a school district. The high school swim teams, we've, with the smallest of some of the high schools, of course, we would look toward having perhaps a county-wide team where you, I know that it would affect the level of participation as far as which level you are, but certainly, to have a high school swim team would be something that's not offered unless we get a facility like this. The other things that they offer, summer enrichment programs, where we do summer reading. I know some, some schools participate in that throughout the summer to keep kids from falling back, but with the central location and the amenities that the Y has, including the field and the pool, you could burn off all their energy, as somebody said here, and then they would actually concentrate and learn to read or say with their studies. The, that goes to the enhanced after-school care and the summer camps. Obviously, we're begging and borrowing, we're begging and borrowing for the camp space in the, right now, so a summer camp with a facility that I showed would be an amazing addition, in addition to field trips. A central location would be phenomenal for this area. And then hosting mentorship programs, there's several of them out there, I know Pickens County Y is participating, we're starting one now into Clemson, but there's opportunities, not only for us to lead one with mentors that we, you know, draft ourselves as volunteers, but also those mentorship programs that are in place, a central location, and I mentioned the community room earlier, would be a fantastic place to do a little sporting event, then go to the community room and do some mentoring, or the whole part is mentoring, but we would be able to host programs like that. Before you go, the next one. Yeah, so, the request is, I have a formal request for support from the district. I think across the state, you'll find that there's a lot of partnerships where the school is supporting the Y, and the Y is helping the school fill gaps or fill needs. I think the biggest example is Rock Hill and Lake Clover, or Lake Wiley and Clover in, around Charlotte, southern end of Charlotte. You know, those, the school with the Y there, and the Upper Palmetto Y, as it's called, are intricately involved. They, not only, the one school actually bonded an issue to have an aquatic center, and the school participates in that. They're doing pretty well over there, it's a different demographic and a different area, but certainly, that's an example to strive toward. And we feel that the partnership of the school district and the Y is, is perfect, and with the pool in mind, central to your mission of offering things that aren't offered now, it would be a tremendous impact in the community, and a positive impact. I have a one-minute trailer that we're showing, and I wish, if you could, change the speakers. This is just a taste of what we do from a PR standpoint.
It'll come to the TV screen. If you just go to the next one, shoot a lot of it start. Just click on it.
Can I answer any questions on the Board?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment, my wife goes to Pendleton's YMCA for the warm pool.
Yes, sir.
Every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, she'd like to see a warm pool a little closer to town.
Absolutely.
You know, because she needs it, she, she just loves it, so.
And that's a vested interest with the, um,
The Cardio.
O C Foundation.
Yes.
They, they want to do the pool and the cardiac rehab.
Yes.
So certainly.
And when you, if you happen to go over there, you'll see at least one superintendent, ex-superintendent over there, Mr. Hamilton.
No, no, but it's Harry.
Harry, it's Harry, yeah.
Principal.
Principal. And it's, to see those, those individuals working that pool, i- it's admirable, because they need that, so if there's any way you could do that, we would deeply appreciate, I would deeply appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Sure.
And we have checked with our financial attorneys, and it is legal for the school district to contribute to a Y facility. There's some, you know, certain way that would have to be spelled out, I think, probably in our, in a bond issue, but we can do that legally, and, and I do agree with what Greg presented tonight, it would be nice for us to offer swimming, we've had parents request that, and that's just not, not something we've been able to do because of the lack of a facility. And then, expanding that Kiwi swimming program to all of our elementary schools would also be desirable, so it, it would play a direct role in the life of the school district if the facility was to come about, so.
Well, Greg, we, we've had these conversations for the last few years now, and, and I, and I think individually, we've all been supportive, and, you know, we've not taken any kind of vote or action as a Board, but generally, everybody supports that. I'm surprised you didn't have the school district as one of the strategic partners on there with all the conversations and
I saved you from that.
Commitments that we had.
Absolutely.
And have had, that we'll, we'll certainly look at that, and, and then we'll work out through Dr. Thorson and y'all, and Tamby's office, the details of how we can help out and contribute to that.
And it is to the point, I mean, the main reason you're here tonight is because the USDA loan is going to require an actual vote and
Commitment.
Commitment.
Anything that we can do to, to ensure that we get the loan would be very helpful, and that includes commitments from GHS with the land, but also, more importantly, perhaps, is the school district, their commitment. And, and I do know that we've been down several rabbit holes and rabbit trails, I've been with this for six years, so I'm very aware. We've had multiple offers in other areas, there was a development that the GHS wanted to entertain, prior to embarking, you know, finalizing that piece of property, so we had a chance of a retail development as being part of that. So I think this is, based on our application to USDA, and the commitment from the Board and the hospital, and of course, with y'all, so this is it. It's, no, it's all or nothing.
So we're ready.
Is that fair enough? Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Greg.
We look forward to it. Anything else?
That is it for me. All right, Ms. Tamby.
Yes, we have a few things I want to ask you about getting approval for Dr. Thorson to sign as a representative of the district on, and there's actually a couple of easements at, at Oakway, it's kind of interesting, there's one, remember, we divided that parcel of property up into three pieces, and we kept a small piece where we have our wood shop and welding shop and that, and we, it's a, give or take, acre and a half. Well, there, there needs to be an easement with the county for them to be able to come down the road that goes in front of it, in case they have to do anything, so we need to have one agreement, which is on the, the drawings, that were very hard to read, by the way, because they were so small. The second part, which the drawing is in there, but the piece of paper is not, and I, I will have that in there for the, for the next meeting, for the approval, would be to have an easement where we are still connected to the sewer that runs through the middle of the, the property that we gave to the county, and we had worked out that we would have the opportunity, if there was a problem, you know, to be able to assess that and get in there and fix that, if it was a problem that we had there. So it's two easements, one, the county's requesting of us for the area in front of our property, and the other, we're requesting for sewer purposes. The county actually, county attorney actually drew both of them up for us, but that's what we need to do to finalize the transition at Oakway.
This is all of the property behind the building and
This, this, just, they've already got that in the thing. This is our little piece, and the little road that runs down in front of it for, for them, if they need to come over to our part of that. And then for us, the, it's kind of odd how the line flows, but it goes out and drains behind the, in the field behind the old football field, the part is sort of separated now.
Sir, if you look, just to orient you, the upper right-hand corner of this diagram would be where the fire station is and the parent drop-off, all right, then you've got the building, and then back in the back, you see that little building, and kind of the lower left-hand portion of that, and up there, you see track one, one point four, two eight acres.
Yes.
I don't know if you can make that out, but that's, that's the piece of property we kept, and you can see the driveway to the back of the school is in that one point four acres that we kept, so that's
Right.
We're giving them an easement to use that driveway. But then, out of that little building that we're keeping, our sewer line runs across what, what is now county property, so we need an easement to be able to repair that if we ever have problems with that sewer line.
We don't expect there'll be a problem, we have one fixture and one sink, so, but anyway, to, to make it right, and to do it, the county's got to have three readings on it, have a public comment section on it and that, but for us to do it, what I want is for Dr. Thorson to have the authority to sign these easement agreements with the county, is my request, basically, in a nutshell.
Okay. Any questions? All right, and so this, we're going to put it on
We, we are, and I'd like to vote on it on the
All right.
Seventeenth. Okay, and then we, you have the financial report, which is, was included in your Questions, concerns?
Anybody have any questions on
The, let's see, the Seneca High School track.
Yes.
Is that a surface issue that they had, or?
That was a completely resurfacing, and we had to redo the high jump area, it was out of spec, the slope was too much, and, and the options were not very good for us at the current location, so we had to pour some more concrete and move it, and actually, they're finished, they, they're supposed to finish coating that part now. What happens is Seneca's hosting the Upstate Track Meet this year on May the sixth, they got that a year early for us, we had planned actually to do this, this coming summer, but it moved up in the timeframe, so that's why we have that on, on there.
Just a question, the surfaces on our, all of our high school tracks, are they similar or are they each different?
No, they're, they're all the same, the same company's done them all, well, we'll have one, West Oak's done.
West Oak's has not completed.
But West Oak's is in the process, you know, they're actually milling it and taking up the old stuff now, as they put in the drains and that kind of thing, but yes, they are, and it's the same company, which is good, because, you know, we've had, we've had a little bit of an issue at Wahala High with the track, and it's, it's things that they see at, at other places, too, but they're coming back to fix it, and while they're fixing Seneca's, they're repairing that lane at Wahala, so.
But it's good that we have the same surfaces.
Had, had good, it's equal.
Most people won't recognize it until you get on it and start running on it, so.
And it's, I mean, they're, they're one of the best around, they do a lot of the colleges and that, it's, obviously, it's expensive, too, but it's, it's well, well-done.
I got another one.
Okay.
Okay, Hamilton Career Phase One?
Hamilton Career Phase One, we're having to pay for pre-design, we're, we're getting, we got, let me see the amount of that check. Are you just looking, you're just looking on the
Yeah.
Yeah, just on the very bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is just the pre-designed work for us with McMillan Pazin and Smith, that's the one where the county and Tri-County have also paid their part.
But we're the fiscal agent, so we're going to be
All the, you're going to see several, you're going to see Tri-County's money coming through us to go, go through to build their building, even though our building doesn't start until later, but everything's being done through the, through the school district, and they're basically going to end up leasing it back from us. It was easier that way, we, we go through one entity, we all go through office school facilities that way, and they, we have a, an agreement, they, you know, we let them know when we're getting ready to be invoicing, they give us the money, Gloria, make sure we don't pay until we get the money from them. But this money was, was a sixty-twenty-twenty split, I think, from the, us, the county and Tri-County, because of the project size and that, so we got portions of that from each of those entities.
One more last thing.
Yeah.
More of a state, the painting, in the same section, the, the painting, school-wide, I just want to say, I've been going through these schools, and it's amazing how, how well we maintain them, and a good paint job sure does make things look nice, and
It does, and Rich, you know, we only have a couple of painters, and, you know, when we put them on a, in a building, if they stay, stay for a while, we do it, they have a rotation, but try to do it a building at a time, but it's, it's tough, I mean, because you're moving out of a room for a couple of days, and, and they're painting, you know, while school's in, we can't do everything in the summer, but
It's a lot of work.
Randy and Tim do a, do a great job with that, so I'll, I'll share that with them and
I, I hope we make, certainly, continue that, because it's
Yeah.
Sure does make a building
It's amazing what a nice new coat of paint will do to make it look good and improve the outlook of everybody.
I just wanted to call your attention to the, the check report. There are two large checks to Dell Marketing, and those are the checks that we wrote to pay for the Chromebooks, and that was a collaboration, it was the General Fund, Title One Fund, the RLIS, which is the low-income technology money, and then our state technology money, couple of years in there, so I think we have finished that order, and Josh and his folks are, are getting them ready to go out to schools.
All right.
And you saw some of them in one of the pictures
Yeah.
That we're using out at
Yeah.
Schools now, but we're also putting the access, that ties in with that, putting access points in, we, we got West Oak and Seneca High going in first, so we can get the high schools set up for their, we'll finish that project through, throughout the end of the school year and into the summer, to, to have those access points in every classroom, which is part of that E-Rate project that Mr. McCatt, right before he, he left one of his last ones.
Who is, is the vendor the same vendor?
It is.
Very good. That was very good.
It is.
I wasn't saying that was weak link, but I was concerned. Very good. Now, they're supposed to quote-unquote do turnkey, we just need to have somebody come in and supervise and unlock the building.
Yep, and they've been doing very well with that so far, that, West Oak's about, about done, so it was amazing to be out there and actually have, have your computer have coverage, you know, when I was at a meeting, so it was nice.
The only concern you will have is if you overpopulate those switches, you may have to purchase a switch or two in some of those closets, but, no, that's excellent.
All right, any other questions on the financial report? And then we'll let Ms. Moore discuss the very, very, very preliminary budget numbers as we move forward, still a lot of stuff going on at the state level.
You didn't get the budget report before the meeting tonight, so I'll just kind of try to go over what you do have there. You should have, what you see on the screen is the revenue projections, and these projections are based on the House version of the version of the budget. There is a Senate version, but we do not have any projections yet from the State Department, so we can't, uh, I can't give you those yet.
We read, I read something online. I thought the Senate version was gonna be a little bit higher than the House.
It is, it is, but we don't, we don't.
And they have to go through committee and all that kind of stuff, but.
They, they are asking or recommending more in the base student cost, and they are recommending, uh, some more help with the retirement increase. But like I said, we don't, I don't have any numbers yet. I don't have the, what would, we would actually get, and I don't have a way of calculating those numbers because it's so convoluted. So, what I did is I just used the, the House version, which are the numbers that we've gotten from the state. The base student cost in this version is $2,400, and that is a $50 increase from the current year. The Senate is recommending 2,435, so that's 35 more dollars than what the House has. Um, and the Bureau of Economic Advisers says that that number should be $2,984. So, um, the numbers at the very top are the local taxes. Those have not, I didn't change those at all, because we said we would keep things flat. The increase that you do see is the Tier Three money, and that, uh, comes from the State Department of Revenue. Increased our interest just a tad, because we're, we are getting a little interest on the money that we do have in the bank.
And interest rates are going up right now.
The next section is the state revenue sources. Um, in the 2017 budget, the bus driver salary revenue number from the state was a million dollars. Our actual new allocation for the current year is $840,000. We don't have anything updated from the state for next year yet, so I'm using the current year's number. Um, so.
So they didn't give us what they said they were?
No.
Shocker, surprise.
Uh, the fringe benefits number and the retiree insurance number, those are from the state, um, projections and EFA. I will say one thing. We did not, um, revise the budget this year, so the numbers that we have in the approved column are not, neither of these columns are, um, exactly what we're gonna, where we're gonna be at the end of the year. A budget is just a plan, so, um, it, it looks a little strange, but it is, uh, it's what we have. So, uh, the EIA money at the bottom, the transfers, those are, um, funding for teacher salary and teacher fringe. That's the increase. And the 1,337 is money that we get in special revenue funds that we transfer to the General Fund. That's at-risk funding. Um, in years past, we have budgeted to transfer money from the nursing Medicaid Fund to the General Fund to help with the nurses that we pay from the General Fund, but because of the, um, the way we're paying for mental health counselors, we won't be able to transfer money to the General Fund this year from that, um, nursing fund. And so that gives us total revenue of $93,727,000. For, uh, the expenditures on the next page, the only thing that I increased were salaries and fringe. I, the increase in salaries is a, the step for anyone that's eligible for that, and of course, the 3% in, insurance increase and 2%, this does include the 2% retirement, because there are still some questions about how the state is going to fund the part that they've already said that they would fund. We don't know if it's gonna come to us as revenue, or if it's gonna come in different, different, uh, pots. Some of it's gonna go to PBO directly.
Probably cut one of our accounts and give it to us over there, so look what we gave you.
Exactly.
Gloria?
Yes, sir.
While we're on the fringe and retirement, the, the help that the state has promised in addressing our additional contribution, um, do you have any, is that going to be just for teachers, or is it gonna be employee district-wide? I've heard both, both ways.
We've heard, we've heard both ways. Um, what I read today from the Senate is that the full 2% would be for teachers and any other professional staff that's funded through EIA.
Okay.
So it would not help us with the other employees.
Maintenance, food service, that, that.
No, sir. That's why I can't calculate the number.
Yeah, you can't, I mean, to let's settle.
So, it is very preliminary. Um, I'll keep listening and, and I may revise it before we get to the end of the next two weeks, although I doubt it, because the legislature will be on, uh, furlough next week.
Are you going to be asking in two weeks for a first reading?
Yes, sir.
What about, uh, reassessment? Do you have any idea how that's gonna affect the local dollars? Is any?
Uh, we've heard across the street that they are anticipating the value of a mill to increase because of reassessment. I don't know how significant that increase will be, but, um, there should be.
Be some increase.
Some increase, but now during a reassessment year, millage is supposed to be reset to where it's revenue neutral.
Unless you announce it as a back-senior.
Unless you announce it as an increase, so, uh, that's kind of where we are. But I do think the county officials are expecting reassessment to bring in an increase in the value of the mill.
And we did, I did email today to see, uh, when we would need to, uh, come across and make our presentation to County Council, and I have, I didn't hear back yet, so.
Wasn't it, they want us to come over?
I, I don't, that's what I was trying to find out. It's typically, typically in April, um, so I'm, I'm wanting to see, they have new clerk of court, so I'm, I want to email and see when we were gonna be on the agenda. But I'm guessing it might be the 18th.
I wish they'd wait. You'd have a little more accurate.
Yeah, we, we.
As much as it's up in the air this year with retirement and everything else, that's gonna be tough to even come close.
Yeah.
The legislature is supposed to, is supposed to adjourn early in May.
Yep.
So they gotta work fast to get the budget set before then.
They hold to that, then we should have some good figures.
Yes, sir.
When you, when we come back to next week, or, or two weeks from now, I think, would it be possible to take this same sheet here that, that you have and show us FY16's budget and actual?
Last year?
Yeah, last year.
Yes, sir.
Budget and actual, and then this year's budget and year-to-date expense for each one of those?
I certainly guess.
Is one year, do y'all want more than one? I mean, that's, doesn't matter to me, but I just wanna see kind of historically how we budgeted and what we've spent, you know, and I think, is that broken down enough?
This year's year-to-date.
Yeah.
And then what's proposed for next year.
Yeah, right.
Yes, that'd be, yes, sir. Actually, I can do that before the week's out and just have an email it to you.
Okay, that'd be great. That'd be great.
If we think of any other areas, I mean, there might be some other accounts.
Yeah, if you want, I was just thinking of, something similar to the, to the, uh, monthly financial, you do, you know, but just with year-to-date for this year, and then budget and actual last year, and proposed for 18th.
I'd be happy to.
That would just, when you got it all on one sheet, you know, I don't wanna see every account number, obviously. It'd take forever to go through that, but, uh, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, sure. Um, just one other thing. Brian Urick is going to be in the state in a couple of weeks, and if you would like to have an update meeting with him, he said he could come to the district and either come to the board meeting or meet with us.
We've done that in the past. Sometimes a couple of you have come for lunch to visit with him, so we could set that up during the day, um, in a day that he's gonna be here or have him come to a meeting. So just think about it.
I'd like to hear his latest update, what's going on, where he thinks we're headed.
Okay.
Any other questions? That's it for us. Thank you.
Go with those individual meetings around them for the.
See if they don't all.
Yeah, yeah.
I just didn't know what to say. I didn't know what to present.
If we had to.
Or if we can have him come, it's better to do it. We'll talk about it. Alright.
Thank you, Mrs. Hopkins.
Congratulations.
Which one are you speaking to?
We can't afford a new nameplate, so she's gonna be Miss Moore.
We have, we need to make an official announcement or something.
Facebook did that.
So I'll save for the embarrassment and I'll jump in.
You go jump in.
Do you need to come over here?
No, I'm good. So you remember a year ago, uh, we spent a lot of time with this massive document called our, our five-year strategic plan, and Joe, uh, I'd be happy to share a copy with you if you'd like electronically or, or in hard copy. Um, but you know that we spend a lot of time, um, engaging many stakeholders to develop this plan, and then annually, what we need to do is we need to revisit our, our data. Have we made progress? Consider our strategies, see if there's anything different that we want to do moving forward, and then we need to sign some paperwork. So in two weeks, I'll ask Mr. Renadnet to, um, sign the, the paperwork again. So what I wanted to do tonight is just give you a little bit of an update on where we've been this past year, and I gave you the cheat sheet, so you don't have to read that whole document all over again. But this cheat sheet is kind of our visual for, um, the strategies that we've, we've engaged in related to the strategic plan. And I think we've made some pretty good progress. Um, starting at the bottom, the culture is really something that the, the principals have been working on in their buildings. This goes back to the, the data that comes from the school surveys of parents and students. And, uh, you know, we, when we meet with them, we talk about their strengths, their weaknesses, and they target those. And so we're already seeing, some of our principals have done some pre-surveys before those required state surveys come in. So we're seeing, um, formatively, we're seeing some improvement. We'll see what the state results are. One of our goals, and that's gonna be important, we had three major goals. One of the goals was around school climate. Unfortunately, here we are at school renewal time, though, and I, I don't have any new data related to our three goals, because all of that data's going to come in at the end of the year. So it is a little bit funny that the state requires this renewal in April, and we're still waiting on that end-of-year data to help us determine how we're doing. So, so I'll just give you that on the front end. On the assessment and data literacy, this is really, um, this is about understanding assessments and how they work and how data is useful to, uh, use in improving student learning and looking at our programs and that sort of thing. I will tell you, this is probably the area that we've made the least gain in this year, but I'm really excited about the new position that you authorized in, uh, my arena that I think is really going to focus on this next year, and so I think we're going to see more progress there. Personalized learning is, uh, exactly what you heard about from, uh, Fair Oaks tonight. It's about really knowing those students, where they are, and you're, you're hearing, uh, that we're doing a better and better job at knowing where students are and moving them forward. So I'm feeling like we're making some good gains there. There's more work to be done, but, uh, it's a five-year plan, so we're not finished yet. I would say that the bulk of the work that we've really made is in these green pillars. Uh, the global citizenry is really, uh, it's more than foreign language, but the foreign language area is one of the areas that we've taken the, the largest step. And you know that we have piloted a number of programs at the elementary level. You heard from Orchard Park tonight. We've had a few other initiatives in. Those won't necessarily go away, but we are delighted to let you know that we will be moving forward with Rosetta Stone in all of our elementary schools next year. We signed a very, very nice deal with Rosetta Stone on Friday. Uh, Dr. Thorson made sure that our schools were on board, that we were good to go. We have a nice discount from them, and then in addition, they were anxious to close the deal at the end of the first quarter, and so we were able to get that last, uh, fourth year at no additional cost to the district. So in addition to a very nice discount, we've got a, a four-year situation. If our middle schools come on, uh, and want to expand, they'll be able to come in under that same agreement as well, so we're hoping that we'll be able to continue to grow that foreign language program. But wasn't it great to see those kindergarten students? Oh, my goodness.
And the cost, just if you're curious, for about the cost of one teacher per year, we're gonna have that program for all 10 of our elementary schools.
And again, they can have, I think there's 22 languages, so what will happen is consultants will come in, meet with each of the principals. They will all implement it differently. In some cases, they wanna go Spanish school-wide, and other cases, they wanna have more languages. Um, it's gonna vary, school by school, because in some cases, uh, we still do have a Chinese teacher that's working in one of the elementary, or a couple of the elementary schools, for instance. So it's gonna vary based on, on the each school. But we are really excited about that. The global citizenry is also looking, though, at those other cultures and understand, thinking about things from a world point of view. So when you see things like that, uh, Taste of the World, and that was a fabulous event, I, I know someone who had an opportunity to visit that, but it is about getting that sense of what is going on around the world. Those students also created wonderful PowerPoints where they, uh, considered a number of different things and, and really put together models. So it's, it's more than just learning a language. It's really, uh, getting that world point of view. So I, I think we're making good gains there. We'll continue to work on that. You're familiar with the progress that we've been making in the CATE world, and we're really, uh, pleased with the, the NOW program that's moving forward, that's had a great success. Uh, Mr. Lust continues to move that forward with, as you know, you just approved the locally board-approved courses to allow, uh, more exposure to our high school students in those, uh, those Hamilton Career Center courses. We're also continuing to expand our opportunities for students to become more of career-aware and explore careers, so making some good progress there. Again, at the lower levels, we need to tighten up our curriculum a little bit, but I think the high schools can help drive that down. So, uh, year one, I'm feeling like we've made good progress. RIGER is, uh, RIGER's kind of the name of the game, and what we've been doing around that is really making sure that we're all on the same page about realistic expectations for students that are going to truly prepare them for that profile of the SC graduate. At the high school levels, we've been working on common core syllabi, uh, making sure that we are really in agreement with what the standards are that need to be taught in each course, how we're going to know if they're going to be taught, looking at those common assessments and making sure that they're in place. Uh, at the lower levels, at the elementary, middle school levels, it has much more to do with making sure that students are truly mastering standards, uh, that getting a passing grade isn't good enough, because that doesn't prepare you for, uh, work that you need to do down the road, so making sure that they're really achieving. One of the programs that has been really helpful, not just in writing, but in thinking, and that critical thinking, has been the John Collins Thinking and Writing Program. And if you, uh, get a chance to talk to our teachers that have seen that, that program and are working with that, a big part of that program is the, the critical thinking, and that is part of how we're getting the rigor into the, the program as well. Technology, as you know, we have invested in heavily as we're moving that one-to-one, uh, program forward, but it's not just about devices. It's about using those devices effectively to cause learning to occur in ways that we can't do with paper and pencil. So we have been working on, on curriculum. The state is also pushing down some new computer science standards that we're gearing up to, uh, to adopt, and we've certainly been working on effective instructional practices. The campus system that we've been using has been helping with that. Uh, again, we've been focused there at the high school level, but we've got more engagement with our students and our parents that have been using that system as well. And then the PBL, PBL is a problem-based learning, and this is the trans-disciplinary STEM activities. We were fortunate to have a, a grant from, uh, the Duke Energy Foundation that has helped us move that forward. We had, we've had a good cohort of folks moving that work forward. You see the benefit, uh, when we see things like our, our AWIM jet toy winner, North Side Elementary, uh, won our regional, and, and, uh, you know, has, uh, done a great job. Uh, then that's just one example of the ways that our students are able to show some of the problem-based learning. But the teachers that have been involved in the, that effort, we've seen tremendous movement from doing a project, because it's kind of a nice theme and fun to do, to really being purposeful about what that problem is and setting that up so that, again, kids are having to do the research and the design. So I really do feel like those five areas we've, uh, hit pretty hard this year and need to continue to hit hard. The collaboration and capacity building really is about our teachers coming together. We invest, uh, a good amount of time in their ability to function. We invest a good amount of time in their ability to function as communities and practice, have professional development days, they're coming together, they're spending time together, they will work together over the summer, thanks to the support that we have from you all. So that collaboration is coming, they collaborate in campus and use that as well. So we have been very, very busy, hardworking. Unfortunately, again, when I ask you to sign the document about our three goals, the three goals really are based on, oh my goodness, those surveys that aren't going to be in yet, and some end-of-year assessments for academics that we won't have yet. And then, third one, it's escaping me, but I will give it to you in just a second. Oh, our SLO process, so our teachers hitting their SLO targets. So again, that's the student learning objectives targets. What happens is our principals are meeting with those teachers at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of year, but we haven't hit that end-of-year summation yet. So, in all three goal areas, I can't tell you with certainty that we've made our annual interim goal, but I'm pretty confident that we've made good progress on it. So that said-
We'll get a report on that after.
Sure, as the data comes in, just like we did last year, hopefully it'll come in in time. But that's pretty much what I'm gonna ask you to sign off on. There is one waiver, and the notion of waivers being included in the strategic plan or the strategic renewal is a newer process that the state has put in place, and I'm sorry, Ms. Dr. Thorson, I haven't alerted you to this in advance. But we will be moving all of our elementary schools to be Title I schools next year, and nine of them clearly qualify as Title I school-wide schools, which means that they have to have a 40% poverty rate for your reduced lunch rate or higher. We have one school that is, last look, was sitting at 39.8%. And, and I was actually at the Rules and Regs meeting in Columbia last week and speaking with Mr. Staley, he said, "You should ask for a waiver for that school, just make them a Title I school-wide school as well." So that is the one waiver that we're going to ask for, and essentially-
I thought it used to be 50%.
It's 40% now for school-wide. So, so if we don't hit that 40% naturally, we're gonna ask the, the state to just grant them the school-wide sets. Uh, we're, we're about 82, 83, I think.
What's the, what's the average?
Probably about 60, maybe 65.
We do have a pretty good range, but if, actually, if you think about it, every one of our schools, elementary, middle, and high qualifies as a Title I school. School-wide does that 40% mark.
This is gonna help us do some of those things that the elementary principals want to do together as a district initiative. It will help give us a funding stream for some of those initiatives, like Rosetta Stone is something that they can consider funding through their Title I. And we've committed to, to purchasing it, and then the schools will have different options of how they pay for their students to, to get that funded. But, but anyway, it's, we feel like it's a good, good thing, and Mr. Hamby has given some additional teaching allocations to our three Title I schools that have been the historic Title I schools to compensate for the money that they will not receive through, through Title I.
And that will help us with a number of initiatives, including the summer reading camp issues and things like that, so we're feeling pretty good about that. So all in all, what I'm telling you is that strategically, we're not changing direction, we feel like we've made good progress, but there's more work to be done. And I will bring you data when it comes, it just won't be here before the next board meeting. Thank you.
Question.
Hey, go ahead.
Go ahead. On the school, back in the old days, each school wrote, or we wrote individual school-wide programs. Are they still doing that, or is there like a district-wide pro, school-wide program?
Each, each school will, is revising their, their report as well. They're all in the same place we are, where the, the data's not in yet. So, though, thank you, Mr. Rukat, for, for helping me clarify. So those, the school reports will be part of the package that we ask you to sign. There's nothing significant that's coming in. I've been observing those as I get them uploaded into the district webpage system, but if you have any specific questions about any of them, I would be more than happy to make sure-
I just wanna know how it, how it worked.
Yeah, they still do that.
You know, if it still was the same.
And, and really, for the schools, it's, it's really our responsibility to be monitoring those and, and providing guidance, and it becomes the formality to upload that information to the state.
Okay, another question.
Sure.
I've been reading about, you got STEM, and then you've put an A in there, and now you got STEAM?
Mm-hmm.
For the, for the arts. What are your thoughts on, 'cause I mean, all we've been talking about is STEM, and, and we, we hear from the schools about all their arts.
And really, the whole PBL, the problem-based learning, really is truly a STEAM, transdisciplinary approach, so we do think of it as a STEAM approach. I think, we, we tend to avoid the STEAM, STEM acronyms in my team, because people look at those letters and say, "Science, Technology, Engineering," and they see them as very discreet domains. And the whole idea is that they actually are not discreet, but that they're, that they're very relevant, real-world, integrated, truly transdisciplinary in the way they proceed. So that's why we tend to actually use the PBL, this idea of problem-based learning, as the, the acronym that really encompasses a full systemic holistic approach to, to that more critical deep thinking.
I just wanna make certain, and I think we all are about the arts, and we got to-
Absolutely.
Because then the, the next question's gonna be on the Rosetta Stone side. Have we, how are we going to implement the actual application? Is it gonna be through homeroom teachers or content teachers, or?
That's actually varying school by school. In some cases, it will be part of centers in the classroom, in other cases, it might be part of the camp rotation, the specials classes rotation. And that's why I was saying, it really will vary school by school how they actually are implementing it.
What I'm so excited about is students will have access to this over the summer, they'll have access to it at home. So a family who really wants their child to speak a second language can do it.
So it's hosted off-site, as long as they have internet access, basically?
Internet-based, right.
Now, okay, good. The one-to-one scenario that we're talking about, are those devices going home?
High school will, elementary's still debating how they're gonna do that.
And, and I'm assuming there's some plan, I mean, we, we were heavily filtered here at the DO, you know.
They're gonna all, it's gonna all run through our system.
Good, I want to-
24/7.
They're even gonna be filtered from home, so if a child, a high school student takes their device home next year, gets on their own personal Wi-Fi at home, it still points back to the school district's web filtering.
Good, I just wanted to make certain.
And we're upgrading from, we're, we're looking at it right now, we're having some issues with light speed, so we're looking at a, a new system to upgrade to.
There, there's, you know, in other words, it's either gonna come back to us, or you can put in a hosted site where it's filtered someplace else.
Mr. Rukat, I'm trying to remember where the timing was in, in your employment with us, but you may have been part of the pilot that we did with the Title III dollars to put iPads in the hands of our ESOL students, and that actually was a very successful pilot. Out of the 70-some iPads that we sent home with students to work on their, their English language, all of the iPads came back unbroken, are you?
Yeah, they don't bounce real well.
But, but they all came back in one piece, the only item that we were missing was one charger by the time that those came back. So even with our elementary students, you know, they, they're pretty good about taking care of the technology. So I'm hoping that, you know, that we'll at least explore the possibility of sending that home with kids, so that they can continue their learning.
Initially, when we started with technology and things kind of went home, we seemed to be the number one provider of, of technology parts for people, because things kept getting lost, so.
Well, I remember the days when you got a bag of keyboard keys and you had to replace them because they walked out, but-
Thank you very much, that's very good.
Any other questions? Thank you. Ms. Williams, you gonna be-
I'm getting to be in executive session.
Oh, we're glad to have you back with us. We get a motion to go into executive session for personnel items, employment recommendations, changes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into executive session for employment recommendations and changes, and personnel contract.
Second.
Most of second, all of the papers, it's unanimous, and you might believe each one at a time.